Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge to the flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have had no -- I should turn this on. Pull this up. We have had no executive sessions since our last meeting. So at this point, I would like to open up the floor to public comment. So let me set a few ground rules here. This will be the opportunity to address any comments to the conditional use discussion that we will be having later in the meeting for during subdivision and land development. So what I want everybody to understand is conditional use is the very first part of a long process that we would go through if we would approve conditional use. Conditional use is for the town center overlay only. We will be addressing the conditions one by one through the process, as many of you may have heard during the conditional use hearing, and we will be discussing them in detail. There will be no public comment at that time. During public comment right now, understand that this is not testimony. I'm going to limit the discussion to three minutes per person so that everybody has an opportunity to speak because we have a lot of work to do throughout the meeting later on. James, is there anything that I missed?
I think you covered it, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay, so at this time, I would like to open up the floor to anybody who would like to speak. What I will ask you to do is come up and state your name and address for the record. Make your comments to the board. We're going to give three minutes per person. If there is anybody online that would like to address the board, click the raise hand button, and we will address you in order. So at this point, I would like to open up the floor.
If I may, first, Mr. Chairman, I want to provide to all the speakers, this will be your 30-second warning, this orange card, and I'll be waving this red card for the stop.
Thank you. My name is Jonathan Stair. I live at 98 Eisenhower Drive. The back windows and back porch of my house directly face the area proposed for Mount Zion Commons. Tonight, you will be voting on whether or not to approve the additional use application for the Mount Zion Commons development. I beg you, I beg you to vote this down. The Planning Commission already rejected this application, and rightly so. It violates both the spirit and the letter of the Town Center Overlay and Mixed Use District ordinances. In fact, it requires so many modifications, alterations, that it makes mockery of the township's ordinances. Section 325-208, Item B of the Township Center Overlay Ordinance states the following regarding modifications to the overlay. Quote, "Such modifications of design standards would not, would not result in adverse impact to adjoining properties or to future inhabitants within the town center," end quote. Section 325-35, the Mixed Use District Ordinance states in part, "The standards, not the aspirations, but the standards of this district are designed to minimize traffic congestion on the streets and provide standards to encourage pedestrian activity." Clearly, the testimony at the public hearing a month ago demonstrated that the Mount Zion Commons development will adversely impact adjoining properties, as many of us have testified. Furthermore, it will not, it will increase, not minimize, traffic congestion and already overburdened intersection, and it will discourage, not encourage, discourage pedestrian activity by necessitating that most people who visit its offerings will do so by vehicle, making walking around the property even more dangerous. I don't, I will not rehash all the objections to this application because you're familiar with them from the public hearing. I just wanted to bring those two points of the ordinances to your attention. Tonight and at the conclusion of the hearing, Chairman Swamley noted that even if this application is approved, it will only be the beginning of a long process to the completion of this project. But I ask you, why even open the door? Why even encourage such a faulty and ill-advised proposal? For the good of Springersbury Township and its residents, I implore you to vote no on this application this evening. Thank you.
I live at 90 Jameson Drive. When I stare out my kitchen window, I'll be able to look at, on the first floor of a two-story building, if this thing goes through, I'll be able to stare at a four-story apartment building that looks like a file cabinet. My objections are numerous. I agree with everything Jonathan has said, and I've made a lot of comments previously. I also note that, at this point, I think most of us have lost all faith in you as supervisors to represent the interests of the residents of the township. You knew two years ago, when this was initially in the development phase, that it did not meet the zoning restrictions, and you went ahead and you pursued, through the township, a proposal for a traffic scoping study with PennDOT, even though it wasn't permitted to have four-story buildings, even though it wasn't permitted to have a gas station with a convenience store, even though it wasn't permitted to have the drive-throughs. And you went ahead and did that. And then in the fall, a year and a half ago, you went ahead and held a meeting to change the zoning. And I've looked at, I've listened to it, the tape of it, and it's basically the attorney for Mount Zion Commons came and presented this, and it was sort of presented as, oh, we're just updating this. It wasn't any type of comprehensive plan. But that's where you decide it was perfectly okay to have four-story buildings, to have gas pumps with convenience stores. And I noted that there were only two intersections on all of the township where this is applied. One already is Haynes Road and East Prospect Road, where there has been a gas station there for years and years and years. And the only other intersection in the township that this would apply to is Mount Zion Road and Market Street. So having watched this, and having watched you, the County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission objected to the changes in the zoning. Citizens, there were like 130 of us at the last meeting, and at this point, we're basically sort of being told, well, this is a long process. I agree with Jonathan. Stop this thing now, because otherwise, what seems very apparent is that you don't give a rat's ass about those of us who live there will be impacted. What you want to do is support business to destroy the area. You're hearing my voice, Criveter, and it's because I'm so angry and so disgusted with what I've seen you people doing with this. Thank you.
I just want to thank Jonathan for saying everything. It was so well said. So the only additional comment I have is, why before this conditional use permit is done, and we talk about it so much, why can't the traffic study done before that? Why can't a feasibility study for the apartments be done before the conditional use application is approved? Thank you very much, and please consider the people who might be living in those apartments if they're approved. There is no place for them to have any kind of life outside of their apartments. It is just an asphalt desert that's being proposed. I thank you very much.
Since nobody talks about Edgewood, which flies down up into Market Street. We have so much traffic now that we can't get in and out of our driveway. We have fire trucks flying up the road and a lot of the ambulances, and I know they're needed. We need no more traffic. I got written up because I had to park in my yard to have workers come to my house to work, and I get a little letter from the township building. They can't, I can't park along the street. I'll get hit. I've asked the police officers, they can't say that, you know? So think about this. It's not only the people below Market Street. We are affected up here in Yorkshire. Terrible. So, thanks.
Dakota, spelled like the state, Falver, 2450 Crystal Lane. I'm probably not going to be popular for this one, but if the question tonight is whether or not mixed use is an appropriate use for that plot, I do support mixed use. There is such a thing as gentle density. I'll be the first to admit that I'm not a huge fan of the proposal as it stands, but that's still a long way out. Things can change. Maybe we'll have a comprehensive plan by then, and that will dictate some of what that looks like. We have a lot of, we have a lot of good destinations in Springersbury, things that are worth going to. The issue is that a lot of them are spread out, and walking isn't really viable in most cases, and so folks drive. There comes a point in time where we need to increase our density, and I'm not saying that we have to become a city. The gentle density exists. To give people the opportunity to walk, and in that way, they don't have to drive. Springersbury is in a bit of an awkward middle ground, where we have those great places to go. We just, the only way we can get there is to drive. We do have to start somewhere. When people talk about whether or not Springersbury has the town center, I think we do. I think it's already been identified, and it's the space between Mount Zion Road and Haynes Road, industrial highway, Market Street, and Eastern Boulevard. This plot sits right at the edge of that. I think if we're going to start with, you know, increasing our density very gently, we might as well start here. Plan has a lot to be improved on, but I think mixed use is appropriate. And perhaps we can maybe get rid of some of the parking and give people the amenities they wish. Maybe that would be a sacrifice they'd be willing to make, and maybe this would be looked at a little more favorably. But thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I'm sorry, F A U, V as in Victor, E R.
Anyone online? All right, then we will move on to our next items. Engineering reports. Diana?
Good evening, gentlemen. I have no updates to the report that was submitted last week. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Civil engineering report. I call you John Junior, but he's already John.
I am not John, no. He's on vacation at the moment. Good evening, members of the board. We submitted our engineer's report last week. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, next, we have our consent agenda, items A through F. Are there any items that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we have bids, proposals, contracts, and agreements, authorization to purchase 2024 JCB Model 35D. Big thing for Denny.
Mr. Chairman, this vehicle is a telehandler slash forklift for the Public Works Department. It is in the 2024 capital budget. Denny, it's available for any questions.
This increases our versatility over the present model?
Yeah, well, the present model that we have, we're having great difficulty getting inspected because pieces of equipment like this need inspected yearly to make sure they're safe. And the one we have is a 1997 Yale forklift. Now, we took the opportunity to go to a teletruck so that it's multiple uses. So we'll do everything the forklift would do, except it'll load, also load trucks because we have a bucket for it, and we'd be able to use it for snow removal in the tight confines of the new parking lot.
Denny, does the old piece of equipment have any value at all?
Actually, the supplier has someone that may be interested in buying it, and that's not reflected in this price, but at this point, they think it's about a $2,000 piece.
Just curious. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the purchase of a 2024 JCB Model 3D four-by-four con, four-by-four teletruck from Stevenson JCB in an amount not to exceed $99,980. P C A, Co-Stars contract, 4400028111.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have subdivisions and land development. Our item tonight is conditional use 2023-003, Mount Zion Commons, at the intersection of Mount Zion Road and East Market Street. So what I would like to do is take each modification request in order, have a discussion with the board, and handle each one. And then at the end, we will vote on the conditional use approval. First one is application for modification from Section 325-199C2 of the TCO zoning ordinance, front yard setback on East Market Street maximum of 50 feet. The applicant is requesting a modification to provide requested relief to permit a front yard maximum setback of approximately 186 feet along East Market Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to allow the maximum front yard setback to be 186 feet along East Market Street from the proposed right-of-way line to provide for sufficient vehicle circulation at the convenience store and gasoline canopy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have discussion?
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, so we have request, modification request number two. Application for modification of Section 325-199F2 of the TCO zoning ordinance, front yard setback on Mount Zion Road, maximum of 50 feet.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to allow the maximum front yard setback to be 144 feet along Mount Zion Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this one?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three. Application for modification of Section 325-199G1. Is that a one or an I?
That's a one.
Okay. Of TCO zoning ordinance, no accessory structure shall be permitted in the front yard. So this is, the applicant is requesting a modification to allow an accessory structure in the front yard, which is a fuel canopy, fuel station canopy.
Yeah, that was my only question. We clarified it's for the canopy. Correct, from that testimony. That was the accessory structure, was the canopy. The canopy and then fueling stations.
And the fueling station.
Underneath.
Yes.
I move to approve the request to allow fueling stations and a canopy as accessory structures in the front yard along East Market Street with the following condition, that fueling stations and canopy cannot impede the traffic flow as outlined in Exhibit 8 as part of the presentation at the conditional use hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number four. Application for modification of Section 325-200G3 of the TCO zoning ordinance, front and side exterior walls of each principal structure shall each contain a minimum of 25% transparent and translucent materials on each story below the roof line. Applicant is requesting a modification from that section to provide less than 25% transparent or translucent material on the East Market Street side of Building Number Two.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to allow for less than 25% transparent or translucent material on the East Market side of Building Two as positioned on applicant's Exhibit Three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think, as I recall from the presentation, that one of the advantages, or one of the tenants will have a screened-in patio area, and that's why they cannot meet this translucent material, because they do want to screen that in. I think that patio enhancement is probably outweighs the need to have the translucent material.
Well said, Charles.
Thank you, Don.
So do I have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Application for modification of Section 325-200G5 of the TCO zoning ordinance, parking facility shall be permitted only to the rear or side of the principal structure. No parking shall be permitted in the front yard. The applicant is requesting a modification from Section 325-200 to permit limited parking facilities in the front yard along Mount Zion Road and East Market Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to allow limited parking facilities in the front yard along Mount Zion Road and East Market Street as outlined in applicant's Exhibit Five from the conditional use hearing. Subject to the following condition, the Board of Supervisors reserves the right to revisit this requested modification during the SADO process.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six. Application for a modification of Section 325-206A3A and B of the TCO zoning ordinance, parking lot interior landscaping. The applicant is requesting a modification from Section 325-206A3AB to allow it to plant the required interior parking lot landscaping trees in alternative locations throughout the site in order to maximize site parking. Any discussion on this one before we? So I just want to say that--
Mr. Chair, I think a motion has to be made.
Okay. We can't have any discussion first.
That's not typically the process on this.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to allow for interior parking landscaping in alternative locations throughout the site to maximize site parking as outlined in the applicant's Exhibit Three as presented at the conditional use hearing, with the following conditions, that landscaping in the interior parking lot must be done to mitigate the light impact and provide for optimal screening of the adjacent properties. Landscaping must comply with the applicable township ordinances, namely Section 32561, landscaping and screening, and the Board of Supervisors reserves the right to revisit this requested modification during any subsequent land use application for the project.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I just have a concern that, you know, I want to make sure that what we're doing with landscaping is providing an adequate buffer, and I'm not convinced, through all the testimony that I heard, that our ordinance for this particular situation will do an adequate job, but the way you worded the, the way you worded the motion, it sounds like it addresses that we can fix that in the future.
So that might be a good question for our solicitor. So we can, at this point, in that motion, as a condition, reserve the right to revisit this?
That's correct. Yes, yes, making that a condition of your approval of this process, and then any subsequent applications during the process, the SADO process. You can address what you're being presented with from a landscaping perspective.
Okay.
So this has lighting impact in here, and that was a concern that I had during the conditional use hearing. I don't remember, did I see that further in here specifically with lighting? That we want to make sure that photometric requirements are met and that we don't have--
Mr. Chair, you can certainly, this is a modification for a specific, this is a specific modification request. You can certainly, once you run through all of your modifications, discuss additional conditions that you would--
Okay.
--require as part of the approval process.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did I hear George?
Yes.
Number seven. Application for modification of Section 325-206B of the TCO zoning ordinance, access. Curb cuts and driveways for parking facilities shall be a maximum of 24 feet wide for two-way and 16-foot wide for one-way drives. The applicant is requesting a modification from that section to allow for access curb cuts of greater than 24 feet for two-way drives to be increased to approximately 36 feet to provide for sufficient interior lot circulation for delivery vehicles and fire service vehicles.
I'll move to approve the request to allow for access curb cuts of greater than 24 feet for two-way drives to be increased to 36 feet to provide for sufficient interior lot circulation for delivery vehicles and fire service vehicles as outlined in applicant's Exhibit Eight, subject to the following conditions. Crosswalks at the curb cuts must meet minimum standards outlined in the-- standards outlined in the township SALDO.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight, application for modification of Section 325-207C11 of the TCO zoning ordinance, traffic evaluation study in accordance with requirements set forth in the township SALDO. The applicant is requesting a modification from 325-207C11 to allow a PennDOT scoping application instead of the required full traffic impact study.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to provide for a PennDOT-approved scoping application instead of a full traffic impact study as it relates only to the Town Center overlay conditional use application with the following condition: The Board of Supervisors reserves the right to request the developer to submit a full traffic impact study in accordance with the requirements set forth in the township SALDO in any subsequent land development applications related to this project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
This is the one that gave me the most concern. What I heard the developer say was that he absolutely was going to do a traffic impact study, but he wanted to get a feeling that the CU was going to be approved, conditional use, before he would do the traffic study. So I want to make sure that we do get a traffic study when we get to that point. But the way it's worded, it sounds fine.
We have that protection in there.
Yep.
I mean, the reality is that PennDOT controls both roads, and I think PennDOT has to weigh in on this.
Yep.
See if it's even viable from a traffic perspective, but township has a control on it as well.
I'll just add that this particular one is the one that gives me the most concern as well, from the standpoint that it's tough making decisions when you feel like you're wearing a blindfold, because we don't know what that traffic study is going to show, and we don't know or can't rely, I don't want to say can't rely, we're not sure what PennDOT's going to require to perfect that, and I'm a little bit concerned about that. But knowing that we have the right to do that in the future, I'm okay with this particular motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think that section is C1, and that's, the second is an L, not 11.
Thank you.
That's correct.
C1L. Got that? You had me covered, didn't you? So we have a motion. Did we have a second on that?
We did.
We did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we're through the conditions. I think there are some other discussion we wanted to have at this point, because there are some other things that, that I have a concern about, and I've heard that there may be some others.
So, Mr. Chair, you're through the modification requests with the conditions, and now, if you so choose, you can discuss additional conditions that you would like or ask that the developer adhere to with this particular application.
So I know one of the things that you discussed was the lighting.
Yes.
I would be happy to move to require that any lighting incorporated into this project be done to meet the standards of all applicable township ordinances, namely Section 325-155 Light and Glare and Section 325-200 Point F Exterior Lighting. The township reserves the right to revisit the condition during any follow-on land use application for this project.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this?
Once again, I have a concern that our ordinance, I don't know our ordinance in detail, but I have concerns that it will go far enough in this process, and just to throw out there, I'm aware that the, there's an international dark sky society that has standards to comply with them, which may or may not work in this situation, I don't know, but the fact that we're reserving our right to revisit this, I'm okay with the motion as presented, but I believe lighting is something that we really have to address to make sure nearby residents aren't impacted.
Would it, would it be appropriate at this point to put something about requiring lighting to meet dark sky standards?
Well, I don't know that we know enough yet what that means at this point. I don't know that we've done the research to know exactly what that's going to mean.
Yeah, that's my concern also, that I'm not sure we know exactly what those international standards consist of.
Maybe they're less than our own standards? I don't know.
Well, and address issues that we don't care about, that we're not really trying to solve here today.
Okay.
I think our subdivision and land development ordinance gives us a fair amount of flexibility to require lighting once we get to that point, and, and make sure that the applicant understands our concerns and is able to design around them.
Okay, any other discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another concern I have has to do with the, the public plaza, and I think that we want that to be more usable to the public. We want that to be maybe somewhere more internal so that it's not out next to the volume of traffic on Market Street, and something that, whether it's the apartment residence or, is it Starbucks, I think, Starbucks could use the restaurant that, that is potentially going to go in, or even somebody stopping at Rutter's to get some gas, let the kids stretch their legs, go over to the plaza, have a, have a drink there, or a sandwich, or whatever.
If they go to Rutter's, they're in big trouble.
Did I say Rutter's?
It's a long walk.
So, Mr. Chairman, I too share your concern about the placement of the plaza where it is. It is also, I mean, it's next to dumpsters as well. I think that it's screened and as it's proposed, but I think a more centrally located plaza area may benefit not only the residents but also the guests, it's a various establishments there.
I would agree with those comments, but I'd also add that one of the other concerns I have about this particular proposal is 170 rental units, but no place for any of the kids who live there to play. So if there's a way to incorporate some kind of play area for the kids that are going to live there, I think that would make a lot of sense, because I don't want to keep our police department busy issuing trespassing citations for those who choose to go to the neighboring apartment complex to use their facility. So I think having something on site here for the kids makes, makes some sense.
So, I guess personally, I'm not sure that the two of those necessarily go together.
They may or may not.
Do we leave that out of now and discuss that as we get further into other sections of the discussion further down the road?
I mean, you can certainly make them separate conditions.
I don't mean separate conditions. I mean, does that get covered under?
SALDO and land development.
Land development?
I mean, again, you can, you can certainly incorporate that into another step of the process if that's your desire to do that at that point in time. There will be, you know, assuming that if this is passed.
But this conditional use isn't taking away our ability to ask for that later?
No, no.
The only other thing I want to add to that, and this is for future, but if our current ordinance, which I understand is the case, doesn't allow the township to mandate recreational area, I think we ought to look at the ordinance for the future for changing that, because from my perspective, this particular site calls for that.
What our ordinance requires is a recreation area that will be public, so a, in essence, turn into one of our neighborhood parks. So the way our ordinance reads is we're really only looking for parcels of three acres or more unless they tie directly into an existing park. So if, if that doesn't happen, then we, which we see a lot, is the developer pays the fee in lieu of, which then that money goes towards our existing parks.
Yeah.
This park and...
That's the way it is now, but we could legislatively change that in the future.
Absolutely could.
But you can't legislate more land than is available?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, I had a comment. I thought when we had our conversation that we actually looked at two plazas, the one that they're proposing, and also a secondary internal one that's in the concrete area shown adjacent to Building Six, I believe it is, that they could set that up as some sort of a benches and, and things to, to make it an internal part, an internal plaza, a smaller one, and then the external plaza as well. Since this would work better for pedestrians that are along the road, this would work better for internal use, but that was just my...
Trying to find that in the, in the minutes from the conditional use hearing.
I mean, we don't have to address it now. It'll come up in the...
Yeah, because...
In land development.
During that conditional use hearing, we, they did talk about that small area off the end of the apartment building that was open.
Yep, Number Six.
Yeah, I guess that's where my thoughts come in, that there's room to work with on the interior.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that I'm asking for that instead of, but in addition to...
So we may want to have multiple plazas. That's what I'm hearing the board say.
I would be a little concerned that if we're too specific about suggesting exactly how to implement the public plaza, that we may force them to limit themselves and how they do that. And if we say we want two things, then they have to do two things, and if they come up with a great plan for one really nice thing, they can't do it, or they have to come back and ask permission. I don't, I don't disagree with most of the, most of the comments about what we're looking for. To me, my big concern here was that the plan that was presented, to me, the public plaza as it was presented, did not really seem to meet the intent of our, the language about a public plaza in the ordinance. It sort of felt a lot more like a, an afterthought and a minimum required to say they have a public plaza. I don't know how we put that in a motion, but that was the way I felt about it.
Solicitor, could we require that the applicant revisit the placement of their public plaza toward the end of enhancing?
So, what I would suggest, I think, I think we're on the same wavelength here, is, is reserving the right to revisit the location of the, of the public plaza as it's currently presented during the next iteration of the land development, or during the land development process.
During land develop.
Yes.
So, would we want to say plaza, or do we want to say a more centralized plaza potentially in addition to the streetscape elements that we were talking about?
Or we could say plaza, parentheses, S, close paren.
You can certainly say plazas, but what, right now, Cor, you know, with the town, the TCO ordinance, it's one plaza.
That's correct.
Essentially located. Okay, so, so that's what's required right now, and that's what's been presented on the plan per what they're putting forth. If it's your desire to move the location of it, that's fine, that's a motion, but if it's your desire to incorporate, say, a play area for children, or a secondary plaza, that would be a condition that you would have to add on top of what's already required. So my concern is if, if you're only saying the location of the plaza, and you add an S to it, you're not going with the intent of the, of the ordinance. So I would be a little more specific
Okay.
if you're going to go down that path. So, maybe a suggested condition would be, reserve the right to revisit the location of the current plaza presented by the applicant in addition to adding additional space, plaza space, in future land development applications. I hope somebody wrote that down.
Did you get that?
Not all of it.
I like that.
Glad you did. I hope you got that, Dory.
Sue.
Sue.
James, I, I assume that our, that the Town Center overlay does not limit the number of public plazas. It just requires that there be one.
Correct.
But would, but the applicant would be more than, able to have more than one if they wanted to?
Yes.
To meet the spirit of the, or, or even change what they call a public plaza and have what they designed along Market Street, which is basically a wide sidewalk with a plaque, call that something different than a public plaza.
Call that a streetscape instead of a plaza?
Yes, you could call it, you, you...
But that would be up to the applicant, not us.
Yes.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a motion based on James's comments?
Can, can you read back? Sorry. I'll type it as you. Related to this project, yes.
So, I liked all of it. I just didn't hear the exact, understand the beginning of it.
Okay, so if you wanted to make a motion that way, the motion would be, I make a motion to revisit the location of the current plaza as presented by the applicant for this TCO application, and in addition, request an additional plaza space in future land development applications related to this project.
The only thing that I think is missing is more centralized location.
You can add that into the beginning of it, to revisit the location of the...
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
To reflect a more centralized location.
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to request the developer to revisit the location of the current public plaza, and in addition, to consider the creation of a centralized, an additional centralized public plaza in all future land development applications relative to this project.
Nailed it.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion. So, are we comfortable with the words request and have the developer consider?
That's a good point, Don, because we use the word require everywhere else.
So, you're reserving the right to revisit, and I'm not certain what you're requiring because I'm not certain whether you want a second plaza or not. So, if you're going to require, there should be a deliverable from the requirement. So, you're reserving the right to at least look at the location and have the ability to move it, if, require movement of it in a future land development application, that's one part of it, because you want to go, you want it more centralized. The requirement for a second plaza, I'm not certain I'm hearing that from all the board members here, if you want that or not. So, that's, that's, I'm clarifying what Mr. Bishop is, is, I think I'm clarifying that, Mr. Bishop.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that explanation.
Okay.
Yeah, so my intent was not to require, only to see them, see what creative thing they can come up to with a solution given this discussion, but we still reserve the right.
Yes.
To approve anything in future land development.
That, that's correct. Yep. That's, that's my understanding of it.
I'm trying to split, give them as much flexibility and creativity, but we still have control over what is final.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Don, you good with that?
As usual, Supervisor Worster got it right. As.
I don't know about that, Don, but thank you.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Let's see if I had some more names here.
Is there, is there a, I think there, was there another item that you wanted to review, or?
I think there's two things on my list.
Okay.
And I want to revisit one that I brought up, but go ahead.
During conditional use, the developer talked about connecting sidewalks to the perimeter of the property specifically, possibly through the landscaping over in the direction of the existing apartments. Not onto their land, but to make that available. Or was that to make it available from sidewalk into the parking lot on the perimeter? So, I'm trying to find.
Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, there's two of them here. I don't know if there was another one.
I just recalled the two that is here on Exhibit Three.
Does that need to be part of this? Is that something that we could ask for later? And I'm also thinking of what we've done on other properties with a six-month note for sidewalks. If we put a note saying, I mean, if if there's a whole bunch of people from surrounding areas that are cutting through and getting to the parking lot and going to amenities that a lot of the people sitting in the audience don't think they're going to do, is it possible at some point in the future to make the developer kind of memorialize those pathways? I've seen a lot of places, whether it's colleges or office buildings or whatever, they don't put all the sidewalks in purposefully up front, they see where the pathways are created by people walking, then they go put the sidewalks.
Yes, you could certainly, as they go, as they go through the land development application process, you can ask for those types of requirements to put in, say, for example, a five-foot-wide sidewalk entrance on their property where people may be coming onto their property. Six-month note is certainly an item that you can.
And that doesn't have to be with this.
You certainly don't have to do it tonight by any means, shape, or form, you can do it during this audit process.
Yeah.
All right, does that make sense then to leave that until?
I think it does.
Future time?
I'm comfortable with that. I mean, we, we see this happen, I know there is a location between Weiss and the backside of Mexitaly, there's a pathway that's a road that's developed over time, we may see this here as well.
There was one other issue that I saw when I was looking through the drawings today that I want to bring up. I've talked about this in the past, I think we talked about it when the developer was originally talking to us, maybe, maybe two years ago. When Market Street was initially widened, a section of it between the Modern Air and Eisenhower Drive was not widened. Market Street was lined over so that there was no shoulder on the south side for a, for a distance, probably almost up to Bloomingdale's, along East Market, almost from the intersection, to make room for moving the highway over. And I think the developer suggested that they would even that out to the originally planned cartway for Market Street that PennDOT had envisioned before they, they got into that project. I don't see that on the drawing here. Guys understand what I'm talking about?
I know what you mean along that.
The, the road, Market Street on the south side basically has no shoulder.
Correct.
Because they moved the lanes south.
They moved the lanes over because of the properties on the north side of the road.
And they developed.
I would like to see that corrected because I think that's an artificial traffic problem.
So, essentially.
See exactly what he means.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, there's four lanes on that side, and only two on that side.
Plus the median, which widens the further you go east.
So, right along here, it's narrowed. The roadway, you can see the dotted line moves over here and then it comes back out over here.
Yeah, right there's the king.
Right here, the dotted line moves over this way, from about here to here, there is no shoulder on the south side of the road.
So, essentially, we are asking for corrective widening of East Market Street I guess it's technically 3311 East Market Street on its eastern border, effectively up to the end of the property line.
Yes.
PennDOT approves it too.
If PennDOT approves it. Got an idea for a sample motion there?
So, you make a motion subject to PennDOT approval?
Yes.
the developer to remit?
Realign.
Realign, yeah, not remediate. Realign East Market Street, is that right?
East, on, East Market, the north side of East Market.
North side of East Market Street.
Between Eisenhower and Mount Zion.
3311. Between Eisenhower.
And Mount Zion.
And Mount Zion Road to, what was the?
I think the original PennDOT widening plans.
To the original PennDOT widening plans. If you have a specific plan number, that'd be great, but I think that's.
Do we have a copy?
We may have that copy, but I don't know.
I, I, I think, I think it's specific enough and adequate, it's descriptive enough to know what.
What we're asking.
Yeah, or, or, let's just say the most recent PennDOT widening plans. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Somebody want to make that motion?
Sure, why not? Mr. Chairman, I move that we require the developer to realign the highway, the, the north side of East Market Street in accordance with the intent of the last PennDOT alignment plan.
Pending PennDOT approval.
Pending PennDOT approval.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this?
It is something that we were looking for, so.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any other conditions that anyone has that they were, you, you mentioned that you had something else, George?
Yeah, I want to have a question for James, I want to go back to the idea of a recreational area for the kids in this development. If I don't, if we don't put a condition in now to require that, do we get another shot at that later?
You could certainly request that during the land development process, but, you know, that's not something that's going to be automatically approved.
Okay.
So.
Well, then, hearing that, I'm going to make a motion to require a children's recreation area at or near the apartment buildings that is satisfactory to the township.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
One, just, just to, just to make the point, I, I really like the idea of this being completely separate from the public plaza, because I think if, you know, we had some discussions about adding the recreation area to the public plaza, and I think that, that diminishes its value as a public plaza, so I, I really like the way this was constructed, George.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to approve the conditional use application in the Mount Zion Commons LLC with the modifications and conditions just outlined and approved for case CU 2023-0003.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Communication from supervisors, anybody have anything this evening?
I, I have, I have one thing. I just want to share that I've, I participated in a great, well, participated is not the exact right word, but I've been, been listening and watching a lot of meetings from the Planning Commission and the zoning hearing board and, and others in the last few months, and one of the things that, that, that stands out to me at this point as I reflect on our township and the number of people who make our township work well. And I think that, that, that this board should consider taking some kind of a leadership role in recognizing and thanking all of the people who donate their time and talents to, to making us a great township. So, I don't have a plan, I, my suggestion is that we at least put this on the agenda for our next meeting or soon, future meeting to, to discuss and, and maybe figure out if this is something that we can do. A lot of different kinds of things have been done in the past, some were good and some were not as good, but I, I think that that's a leadership role that we should take.
I agree with you, Don.
Me as well.
Excellent suggestion. Dory, you got that for a future agenda item? Thank you. Any other comments, communications from supervisors?
I just want to give a shout out to the Central York Boys High School Basketball Team for becoming the first public school in York County to win a state championship, and I want to also thank our police department for the send-off that they gave them to go to the championship game.
Nothing further to add.
Manager's report, Mark?
I, I have one question for the solicitor, I think it's, yes. The, I'm, I'm just, this, this, uh... The, I'm, I'm just curious, the, the, of, of adopting the international fire, whatever it is. I, I noticed that Yalfer has requested that we adopt these, these regulations. And the other two municipalities in Yalfer have already done it. And I'm not saying that we should do it, but I'd like to know who's responsible for it and what, what the next step is for that.
Mr. Bishop, I'm certainly happy to get that answer for you and follow up after the meeting if that works for you.
Great, thank you.
Mark, anything in the managers' report?
Nothing further to add.
Questions? Ordinances and resolutions. We have resolution number 2024-32, amendment to designated depositories.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to add an additional bank account through Pliggett that offers more higher interest rates for our investments.
Move for the adoption of resolution 2024-32, amendment to designated depositories.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 2024-33, support of Yalfer to submit for a safer grant.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of resolution 2024-33, approving Yalfer application for the safer grant.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything on old business that anyone would like to have a discussion on this evening? How's traffic going over there with all the construction on Ebert's Lane and?
I, I drove through yesterday, and it seemed to be going well.
Do we make it through all of those bridge supports that they were moving in?
They were supposed to be scattered yesterday and today. I don't know if they got them all delivered. But in, as I stated last meeting, probably towards the end of this month, well, we are at the end of this month. Sometime in April, we'll, earlier April, we'll put the temporary speed humps down. But we'll check with the contractor to make sure that's, certainly don't want those heavy loads going over those and ruin them.
Good catch.
I, I, I also, I had a question about the, the spring and period, the volunteer fire company bylaws issue. Just wondering if there's any plan for moving that forward, or who's, is, is anyone doing anything?
I am. I'm researching that. It seems like everything I can find so far in our ordinances that reference the bylaws reflect back when we had our own fire department. So I don't know how much of that applies anymore since we don't have our own fire department, but I am researching that.
Great, thank you. I think that's an organization that we don't, we don't want to get, we don't want to be responsible for slowing them down or making it impossible for them to do things, clearly. Not saying that we're doing that, but we should try to help them out whenever we can. And it probably is a complicated situation.
Anything else on here that we want to discuss? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.